All right. I'll call the Thursday, March 7th, 2024 Planning Commission Meeting to Order. We are in the presence of an ex-Planning Commissioner, Commissioner Corey Kramer is in the audience. Would you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
All Commissioners are present with the exception of Vice Chair Rosine, Secretary Harris, and Commissioner Barto, who are excused this evening.
All right, thank you. All right, public comment. This is a time we'll take public comments on items that are not on the agenda, that are generally within the purview of the Planning Commission. If you wish to make a public comment at this time, keep your comments to three minutes or less.
Hi, my name is Jim Carlson.
Hi, Jim.
I'm a resident of Newport Beach for 43 years. I'm also an architect for over 40 years, licensed in California. And I'm concerned about the notification distance for different projects. It's 300 feet. And the city of Fountain Valley is changing theirs to go to 1,000 feet. I know it's a state requirement, but I think we should change that because the way the city of Newport Beach is laid out, we have highways, we have roadways, we have waterways. And just like the upcoming Newport Village project, the people that are across the waterway from that didn't get notified or won't get notified because they're over 300 feet away. But they'll be very much impacted by that. So I'd just like the city to maybe take that into consideration, that they look at this. And I know it's a state requirement, but you can go beyond that. And I think they should because we don't think it's working. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments? Okay, seeing none. Request for continuances. Staff, are there any requests for continuances?
There are none.
Okay, moving on, consent items. Item number one, the meeting minutes of February 22nd, 2024. Would anybody from the audience like to comment on these minutes? Okay, seeing none. Just for the record, I was absent at the last meeting, but I did go ahead and watch the meeting online, so I will be opining on the meeting minutes.
Mr. Chairman, I want to ditto you. I was also absent the last meeting, but I was able to review and watch the video this afternoon, so I first and what the minutes are.
Right. Do we have a motion?
I'll make the motion to approve as amended.
Right, do we have second?
I was here, so I'll second.
All right. Motion is second, call for a vote.
The motion carries unanimously.
Great. Moving on, item number two, these are the public hearing items. The first public hearing item is the Genesis. Real quick, Yolanda.
Thank you, Chair Elmore. Yolanda Sumra with the City Attorney's Office. I just wanted to report for the record that Commissioner Barto is recusing on this item due to a real property conflict.
Right, thank you. Okay, this is item number two, the Genesis Automobile Dealership, PA 2023-0094. The site locations, 320, 400, 410, 500, and 600 West Coast Highway. Staff, please proceed with your presentation.
Thank you, Chair Elmore and Commissioners. My name is Jenny Tran. I'm the Assistant Planner for this project for the Genesis Automobile Dealership Appeal. This project is located at several properties, 320, 400, 410, 500, and 600 West Coast Highway, as indicated by the red outline here. And again, this shows that the property is within the general commercial zoning district and general commercial general plan land use category shown in red. To the north and south in the yellow is residential zoned properties. This project is for a 19,044 square foot, two-story automobile dealership that specializes in EV cars. The project provides parking on a surface parking lot, and part of the project is to merge seven underlying lots of the original track map. Additionally, the project has improvement to the West Coast Highway right-of-way to realign the curb line. This application is for four separate applications as part of the project. The first one is for a minor use permit. For the classification of this automobile dealership is Vehicle Equipment Repair Limited, which requires approval of a minor use permit. Additionally, as a footnote, the project includes Vehicle Equipment Sales Limited, which does not require a minor use permit. That use is allowed by right. Next, there is a minor site development review for non-residential construction up to 19,999 square feet. As previously mentioned, this project proposes 9,044 square feet for the automobile dealership. The project also proposes a modification permit, which allows for a 10% deviation of the rear setback of five feet. This would allow up to a six-inch encroachment in that five-foot setback. The project design is proposing a two-inch encroachment in that setback. Finally, the project proposes a tentative parcel map to consolidate the lots. As previously mentioned, the project is merging 11 underlying lots of the original track map. As mentioned, the project requires improvements to Coast Highway to realign the curb line. This would take 12 feet from the front property, and this property shows that 12 feet realignment of the curb line where the property will shrink 12 feet in depth. There is a square footage discrepancy. The report indicates a square footage of 19,952 square feet. The reason for that is the final plans included this mezzanine area that wasn't part of the original project design. The applicant has provided revised plans to remove this mezzanine area and with some minor floor area adjustments, this brings down that 9,952 square foot to 19,044 square feet of the proposed building, which is in alignment with the trip generation analysis that was prepared for this project. This project went to the zoning administrator on February 1st, 2024. During this hearing, the zoning administrator approved the minor site development review, minor use permit, modification permit, and the tentative parcel map and adopted the resolution. An appeal was filed on February 15th citing concerns for the SEQA exemption, the EV-only assurance, traffic concerns, public noticing concerns, and also the concerns that were brought forth during the ZA hearing. Additional material was provided detailing these concerns as well. First, for the SEQA exemptions, this project is exempt for Class 1 for existing facilities related to the improvements to Coast Highway. Coast Highway is an existing right-of-way to be improved, and they're not creating additional new lanes. The Class 32 exemption is for infill development projects. This project has no significant traffic, noise, air quality, or water quality effects. And as previously mentioned, based off the trip generation analysis of the 19,044 square feet proposed building, the net daily trip generation is less than 300, which doesn't require a traffic study per our traffic phasing ordinance. And the air quality impact is significantly lesser for EV cars, which is a design feature of the project, as this automobile dealership will specialize in EV cars. This project is also exempt per the Class 3 exemption for new construction or conversion of small structures. This project is going to demolish the six existing buildings onsite, which is approximately 14,500 square feet, and construct the new 19,044 square feet automobile dealership with a net increase of approximately 5,000 square feet. And finally, Section 15183 of the SEQA guidelines is for projects consistent with a community plan, general plan, or zoning, and the project is consistent with the general plan and zoning district of general commercial. For EV services, the project description is for an automobile dealership that specializes in EV services, but as an added condition of approval, it also requires that changes that would include services of automobiles with internal combustion engines would require an amendment or a new review. For the traffic concerns, part of the operational characteristics as proposed for the EV car automobile dealership is that services will be by appointment only rather than a walk-up or drive-in service. EVs require less maintenance, and they also provide over-the-air software updates, which reduces the amount of trips required to get your car serviced. The project also provides complimentary service valet where onsite employees will drive to the car owner's home or place of work, pick up cars, bring it back, perform services, and return the cars to the car owner. Also, onsite vehicle technicians will be available to direct vehicles to service parking spaces in the event that any possible queuing into Coast Highway may happen. Employees will be able to direct cars onto the surface parking area. Again, as previously mentioned, the trip generation analysis determined the net increase of 299 daily trips, which is under the threshold for a traffic study requirement. There are also concerns for public noticing. Noticing was provided in compliance with our zoning code for both the zoning administrative hearing and the planning commission hearing. On the right is the affidavit for this planning commission meeting where mailers were sent out on Thursday, February 22nd, which is more than 10 days, and the code requires 10 days prior to the meeting for noticing. There are also concerns that were brought forth during the zoning administrative hearing. These concerns consisted of the property being a coastal bluff. This property is not considered a coastal bluff in the city's coastal land use plan. There's also concerns if the zoning administrator was the appropriate hearing authority for the project, but based off the proposed scope of work and the applications required, the zoning administrator was the appropriate hearing body. There are also concerns about combustible batteries being stored onsite. Condition number 32 indicates that no combustible batteries will be stored onsite. And finally, there were also concerns about the noticing brought up during the zoning administrative hearing. The project was publicly noticed per the zoning code, and additionally, the applicant conducted voluntarily outreach by sending over 100-plus letters to the neighborhood. There's some modifications to the resolution that are being suggested by staff, which is to revise the references to square footage from the 19,952 square feet to 19,044 square feet, as mentioned. Additionally, this would change the proposed floor area ratio from 0.26 to 0.25. And finally, just a typographical error to add the language to uphold and affirm the zoning administrator's approval in the decision. Staff is recommending to conduct the hearing, find this project exempt from SEQA, and to adopt the resolution, denying the appeal and upholding and affirming the zoning administrator's approval for this project with the suggested modifications. Thank you, Commissioners. The applicant also has their own presentation tonight.
Right, thank you. Commissioners, any questions of staff? Start down here. No? Yeah, Commissioner Langford.
Thank you for the presentation. That was excellent. My question was about the electrical poles in the back on the bluff. What's our policy on that? Is it new development takes them underground? Is it something that they can decide to do for their own purposes? Or what do we do about that?
Typically, with new development, I think we strive for undergrounding. However, in this case, there's opportunity to underground those two poles. However, as far as our requirements, I don't have the answer right now.
Okay, because I know in residential areas, like if you're developing CDM, you had poles. If you're doing something new, then you're required to go underground, but they're deciding to go underground for the benefit of everybody, even though the adjacent property owners don't have it, haven't undergrounded, but maybe they will in the future, that kind of thing? Okay.
Any other questions of staff? Yeah, Commissioner Saleen.
I'm just curious about this. It seems confusing. I keep for the setback modification. I see two inches, I see six inches. Is it two inches or six inches? And is there really no way to make the building such that you can't lose six inches to avoid the whole modification?
Well, I can answer the first part. So the modification allows a 10% deviation from the five-foot setback, which allows up to six inches. Their project design is proposing two inches, but they do have flexibility to go up to six inches if there ends up being a change in design.
Okay, any other questions of staff? Okay, Ex parte communications, Commissioner Saleen, I'll start with you. Microphone.
None.
None from... I spoke with the applicant's representative.
None.
None.
Okay. This time, I'll go ahead and open the public hearing. I believe the applicant has a presentation. Please state your name for the record.
Good evening, Chair Elmore, members of the Commission. I am Shawna Schaffner, Chief Executive Officer of CAA Planning, representing the project applicant tonight. Before I get started, I'd like to thank city staff, in particular Jenny Tran and Brad Summers, for working with us very diligently in getting us here tonight. So I think that Ms. Tran has provided a very thorough presentation. I'm going to try to highlight some of the areas that might be confusing or that I can further reinforce so that there's clear understanding. The project involves the demolition of six separate buildings, which comprise approximately 14,500 square feet and other site improvements. The project will then construct a 19,044 square foot building for a Genesis dealership. The building will range in height from 20 to 25 feet, will include 80 surface parking spaces, and will underground two of the utility poles at the rear of the building. And I'll just say here, Commissioner Langford, we are not proposing to underground the other two because we are not disturbing the site in those areas, and we think it could be more impactful to get up onto that slope rather than to leave them alone. The project also involves the consolidation of 11 lots into one parcel and removal of one driveway on West Coast Highway. And finally, the dedication of 12 feet of right-of-way at the frontage, which will allow for the curb relocation to match the Coast Highway lane configuration at the Dover intersection. So here we have the existing site. You see the gray buildings, which will be demolished. The red represents the four driveways. And again, one will be removed. The project will have three driveways in the completed condition. And here we have a Google Street View of the property. I've added this purple highlight to kind of identify the frontage. And here we have an aerial view. The yellow represents the residential properties. The red represents the commercial zoning district with the building overlaid. And here we get to the site plan. The structure is depicted in purple here. It is concentrated on the eastern side of the site. The majority of the site will be surface parking. Okay, sorry. So I've colored the site plan to kind of walk you through the different components. The blue shading represents the showroom at the front of the site. That will be 25 feet in height. The yellow shading represents the EV lab, and the peach shading is the enclosed surface parking at the rear of the building. Both of those areas will be 20 feet in height. And then the green shading represents the surface parking. Here is a rendering of the building straight on from Coast Highway. And here's a slightly different view. And again, here are those project components. The peach represents the surface parking, which will be enclosed at the rear of the building. The blue is the showroom, and the yellow is the EV lab. Here is a site section to depict how the site will function relative to the existing slope and the residences above. You can see the enclosed parking and then the showroom. And here are building elevations. The building will be comprised of basalt gray and matte black aluminum composite metal with a multi-panel glass frontage. The roof overhangs the glass frontage of the showroom to provide a depth to the structure and visual interest, while the EV lab and the enclosed parking are further set back. The project includes five-sided architecture, which takes into account views from properties above West Coast Highway, and includes non-reflective materials on the roof and screening for all rooftop equipment. The parking lot light fixtures will be directed downward and will have back shields to prevent light spillage. And here's a front elevation of the site. I know it's a little hard to see, but it depicts the very long frontage we have, which is approximately 550 feet here. It's a long, narrow site. Here we have the landscape plan. The project will have 4,900 square feet of new planting, mostly in the parking lot, will include 17 Mexican fan palms, nine parking lot trees, two Brisbane box trees near the property line with McDonald's, and there will also be shrubs, ground cover, and green walls incorporated into the site, along with a zen garden and a landscaped atrium. The project includes 12 feet of right-of-way dedication along the property frontage and will relocate the curb, which is depicted here in yellow highlighting, again, to align with the taper that we see from the Dover intersection. And here we have the modification permit. We are requesting the modification permit to encroach into the required five-foot setback. We have a two-inch encroachment. We have been working very diligently to try to refine that, but at this point, we have a 15-foot, six-inch section of the building, which encroaches two inches into the five-foot setback. This is an area where there is enclosed parking, and we think this is an integral component of the project that will highlight the neighborhood compatibility. By enclosing both the service and the rear parking, we will be able to reduce noise from going up slope to the residential properties. Also, because the property is required to dedicate 12 feet at the frontage, we feel that a two-inch encroachment into the five-foot setback is appropriate for this 15-foot, six-inch segment of the building. The majority of the... or excuse me, the balance of the building will comply with the five-foot setback. The parking in the center of the property will be 50 feet setback from the rear property line, and on the western side of the site, we will have an 85-foot setback from the rear property line to the start of the parking. So this is a very small modification permit request. As indicated by Ms. Tran, our public outreach for this project was extensive. We focused on the residents nearest the site, both north along Kings Road and also to the south across Coast Highway and Bay Shores. We also conducted outreach with local businesses. The building was designed with the residents in mind. We clustered the development to one side to open up views across and over the site. We stayed under the height limit. We are not requesting an increase through the site development review permit. We've enclosed the surface parking nearest the residence to provide increased compatibility, and we've also fully enclosed the EV lab to minimize operational noise. I sent personal letters to 26 residents on Kings Road and Crestview that were delivered via FedEx of those closest to the site. I also mailed over 120 letters to everyone on the city's mailing list, providing information about the project and my contact information if there were questions. I received two queries from this outreach. I had several meetings, phone calls, and a virtual meeting with a resident at 421 Kings Road. They had several questions, which we were able to answer over a series of time. The residents of 421 Kings Road also invited their neighbors to participate in our virtual meeting, and we didn't get any takers in that. So the issues raised in the appeal include environmental review. As staff have indicated, this project is exempt from SEQA. There's also a detailed letter, which was submitted today from Sean Matzler at Cox Castle, providing a comprehensive response to the appellant's attorney's letter for March 5th. And I should say that our exemptions are based on the preparation of 11 different technical studies, which are listed here, and also on the rest of the project information in the record. Related to the potential sale of non-electric vehicles, Genesis will be increasing EVs by 2025, and the brand is at the leading edge of the transition to EV. They've committed to be in carbon neutral by 2035. Any future operator relying on this minor use permit would be bound by the same conditions that would apply to this project. Additional issues raised in the appeal were the traffic impacts. Coast Highway at this segment has 45,000 average daily trips. This project will net less than 300 average daily trips, which is a very small incremental increase. And the city's municipal code does not require a TPO analysis for this level of trips. Additionally, through the dedication of the 12 feet of frontage and the realignment of the curb, the traffic flow through this area will be increased beyond the intersection. An additional issue of the appeal was an impact to sensitive receptors. Again, the majority of the project's operations have been designed to occur within enclosed spaces to be compatible with the up slope neighbors and also intended to promote community compatibility, such as high-quality design, lots of landscaping, and the lighting. We also received a letter prior to the appeal from Jim Carlson expressing concern about the six-inch encroachment into the slope. We do have detailed geotechnical analysis. I think the city's geotechnical engineer has reviewed the plans. Construction documents will be required before a building permit can be issued. Those will have to comply with the California Building Code and the City of Newport Beach Municipal Code standards. This project will increase the slope stability to a factor of safety of 1.5, which is safer than the existing condition. Additionally, Mr. Carlson had questions about telephone poles and utilities. As I've noted, we will be undergrounding the two utility poles closest to the project where the site will be disturbed, and the project will relocate necessary utilities as required by the city. This is a project that has been carefully designed to be compatible with the community and the city's general plan and zoning requirements. Chair Elmore, we have reviewed the staff report, and we agree with the conditions of approval and the resolution as amended and noted by staff. We request that the Planning Commission deny the appeal, uphold the zoning administrator's approval, consistent with the staff recommendation. Because this is an appeal hearing, I would like to request two minutes of rebuttal if that suits the chair. I'm available for any questions.
Thank you. Commissioners, any questions for the applicant? No? Commissioner Langford? No? Commissioner Larry? No? Thank you, Ms. Schaffner. Okay. I believe the appellant is here. Would they wish to make a presentation or a comment?
Good evening, members of the Planning Commission. My name is Chuck Kralikowski. I'm counsel for the appellant in this matter, who is Maryam Parman. She lives in a home just above the development, along with several other property owners along Kings Road. I submitted an objection letter a few days ago outlining our objections, mostly focused on the SEQA exemptions that are being requested to be applied for this development project, as well as some notice issues and some, I call them SEQA cleanup issues at the end. But there are three issues I want to address tonight. One was the notice issue about a week ago, when I learned that my client had not received any notice of this hearing. I did reach out to the city, saying, hey, we'd like to find out notice about this hearing. I was advised that notices would be mailed out that day, which was not within the 10 days I've seen. And some additional information since then regarding a printout. Again, I don't quite know if it was actually mailed on those days or not, but that's what your printout says. But my client actually just received notice, I believe, just in the last day or two of this hearing in the mail. So if it was sent out when it says it was sent out, it took 12 to 14 days to get their address. But what I want to focus on tonight are the SEQA issues. The purpose of SEQA, which is twofold. One is to identify and mitigate against any potential impacts to the environment related to a proposed project. But the other part of that is to actually inform the public as to what the project is, what the potential impacts might be, what the potential impacts might be with respect to not only this project, but other projects that have occurred in the past, that are pending, and that may occur in the future, which are called cumulative impacts. So let's get started with the three points. One was the point about the notice issue and the communications we had with the city regarding when it was mailed out. And I think there's still a discrepancy there in what date it was actually mailed. But I'm going to move on to the other two points. Exemptions are exceptions to SEQA. SEQA is supposed to provide the public and essentially everyone of the information about a project, how to identify what those impacts are, and how to mitigate against those impacts. In this case, the pursuit of exemptions to SEQA must be based upon substantial evidence. It is the burden of the applicant or the project developer to provide that information to the city. City reviews it, but it must be based upon substantial evidence. And so let's go through each of the three exemptions that are trying to be applied in this case. Class 1 exemptions are generally related to altering or modifying existing facilities. Here, it doesn't match. They're demolishing several older buildings, existing buildings, and building a brand-new building. Just looking at the face of the Class 1 exemption, this does not fit within a Class 1. In fact, the new building, if you look to the square footages, is roughly 33% larger than all the other buildings when they were in place. So by definition, we don't believe a Class 1 exemption applies. This is not a negligible project. The term negligible is used sometimes in Class 1 exemptions. This is not negligible. They're demolishing the entire site and building a brand-new site in a different location. That is not negligible. The second exemption that I'm objecting to tonight is the Class 32 exemption for infill development projects. Typically, infill development projects are projects that are consistent with the general plan and zoning, are less than five acres, and essentially have no impacts whatsoever to the environment. Impacts related to traffic, to noise, air quality, water quality, and we don't believe this is the case. Before the zoning administrator, and again, Before the zoning administrator—and again, your analysis tonight is de novo as to what was presented before the zoning administrator at the time. There was no trip generation information. All it was, was we heard that the trips are 299. We didn't see any actual study of that. The zoning administrator didn't reference any study of that. There was no—there was no traffic engineer to talk about that. We don't believe there was substantial evidence to support it. But the position that the city's taking on this is that, well, we've determined it's 299 additional trips. That doesn't meet our requirements to require a traffic report. But that's not the test. The test isn't what are your thresholds with respect to why you believe certain reports should be done? The question is, will this impact the environment? Will these additional 300 cars per day, whether they be gas combustion engines or electric vehicles or whatever, will they impact the environment? That's the ultimate question. And so the zoning administrator and you, this dais, have to decide whether those additional trips are significant enough to take it out of a class 32 exemption. We think they are. We think that adding those trips and having those additional cars either onsite, using the facility, are enough to trigger essentially an additional environmental review above a class 32 exemption. And one of the arguments that's been raised, well, it's only electric vehicles, but that's not the case. People coming to this facility, whether they're buying or whether they're having their car serviced, they may drop people off in electric car—in—in gas combustion cars. The people who work at the facility may drive cars that are not electric. So to say that this is completely electric, we're not going to have any gas emissions, we're not going to have any noise, we're not going to have any air quality issues because it's electric, it—there's going to be gas cars on the site using it. So now, the class 3 exemption, which was kind of added after the zoning administrative hearing, is also interesting because class 3 exemptions relate to minor modifications to existing structures and conversions. Like the class 1, this again does not fit our factual situation. They're trying to fit a square peg into a round hole. Again, they're demolishing a 14,000-plus-square-foot multiple buildings and building a brand-new site. What does it have to do with modifying existing structures or converting existing structures to new uses? It just doesn't apply. And so we don't believe the three exemptions to CEQA are applicable with respect to this analysis for this project. Therefore, additional environmental review is necessary, include an initial study, and then make a determination, whether it's a negative declaration, a mitigated negative declaration, et cetera. Those are the avenues in which this project should proceed. Now, the last issue I want to talk about tonight is the mitigation unusual circumstance cumulative impact stuff, I'll call it. So one of the purposes of CEQA is not to move things into the future. Oh, we'll deal with that later. We'll deal with that through conditioning. That's not the purpose of it. The purpose of it is to inform the—in public of what's going to happen, how we're going to deal with it right now, not in the future, but right now, in terms of mitigation measures under a CEQA document. Based upon the research we submitted, we don't think you can mitigate your impacts, use an exemption, and then just say, well, if there are impacts, we'll just mitigate them. It—it doesn't make sense, because if there's impacts, you shouldn't have the exemption to begin with. And so to mitigate impacts through conditions begs the question, why are you doing the exemption to begin with? Second of all, cumulative impacts. It is actually—the city, under the law, the city actually has to consider cumulative impacts for any project that is discretionary, which this one is, whether it's an exemption or other—or other heightened environmental review. There was no evidence in the record whatsoever about what cumulative impacts were analyzed, what projects came before, what projects are in the line right now, and what projects are ready to start in the future. Without having any analysis of that, we don't believe the CEQA exemptions can be applied because there was no analysis or assessment of cumulative impacts. And finally, changed circumstances or special circumstances. Because this property is right up against a fairly steep cliff with homes on top, we believe there are special circumstances that would mitigate against approving the project, especially with setbacks that go into those properties, or at least the areas where those properties are located. And by the way, as you saw the picture earlier on, all the property lines extend all the way down to the proposed development. Each of those owners has the ability to develop their sites based upon setbacks and development requirements, but they have the ability to move down the slope, just like properties to the north have done. And so analyzing and assessing whether this project may impact the future development of those sites, how the sites could be developed, how could they be built out, would be necessary in order to have a complete environmental review. So based upon all that, we do respect the request that the Planning Commission grant the appeal and reverse the decision and—and send it back to staff to act—to perform additional environmental review for the project. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Commissioners, any questions of the appellant? Ms. Schaffner? Christina? Great. Thank you. At this time, I'll go ahead and open up the public comment to the rest of the public. If you wish to make a comment, please come up, state your name, and keep your testimony or comments, three minutes or less.
Good evening, Chair Elmore and planning commissioners. My name is Corey Kramer, and I represent the ownership of Balboa Bay Resort and Club, an iconic member of the community here in Mariners Mile. We are strongly in support of the proposed project. We have invested substantial monies and energies and efforts into our property, Balboa Bay Resort and Club, and by extension, have improved the Mariners' Mile neighborhood. The Genesis dealership represents a proposal that is well-suited for the site and for Mariners' Mile. It's well-planned, considerate of neighboring residents, and provides a much-needed and viable project that will convert several deteriorated, incohesive buildings into a single-quality building and enhanced landscaping. The proposal provides a high-quality project that presents an opportunity to improve a portion of Mariners' Mile that has been need—been in need of improvements for many, many years, while responsibly generating revenue for the city. The failure to relocate the Porsche dealership to the project site in 2016, which I remember quite—quite well, resulted in not only an eight-year loss of revenue from that project site to the city, but the loss of the Audi dealership that was ultimately relocated outside the city from the existing Porsche site. This is a great loss for our city and for our tax base. Respectfully, I encourage the Planning Commission to approve the Genesis project as proposed. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Good evening. My name is Patrick Pan. I'm the owner of 321 King's Road. I didn't get any notice until I received this public notice hearing about this project. So my concern is of the project's encroachment on the property line. I'm probably the nearest to the EV lab site depicted on the diagram. So I'm concerned about the traffic, the noise, and possibly any air quality condition that may approach my property. So I object to this project. Or if there's any further encroachment in the setback that might disturb the slope and the foundation. And that's it.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Jim Carlson again. Jimmy, can you pull those up, or you couldn't do it?
No, I couldn't.
Okay. Pardon me?
I would—
Okay. I—I took some photographs of the property there, and they show—I drew a couple of white lines on it. They show one that where the other side of the telephone pole easement is and where the back of the—the building that was adjacent to this. I took that over like that, and there's substantial grading here. These—these houses above this are not new, and so there's going to be movement. They built a three-story house next to me, and they did everything like that, 30- and 40-foot caissons or whatever else. And my house was built in 1947, and it had like 20 cracks. They're minor, but they're at shear points and things like that, and they move. So this amount of grading and excavation is serious, and there's no mention of it at The existing Mariner—I went to the city today and looked at the existing Mariners' Point building. It has 20-foot retaining walls that are integral in the part of the building right there. That's pretty substantial. There's also an existing—I went to the city before this when I wrote my letter. There's also an existing 10-inch city sewer that transverses across these properties at its sloping angle and things like that, which is critical also for movement, especially when it's—I don't know how old it is, but it's substantially old. There's—the right now, there's—the right now, there's two major slope failures on King's Road from—not this last rain, but from a couple of rains before that, and it had gotten worse, and there was no grading at all that involved at all. There just—something happened with the water and the amount of this slope, which is like a 45-degree slope, and they had major problems, and they got worse. I think there needs to be more study completed before this project is approved or not approved. I'm not against the dealership. I'm against the amount of—the lack of planning and the lack of study on the excavation and the grading. Any questions from the air?
Nope. Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Oh, there they are. Excuse me. These are the pictures I took. When I was in the—the city, when I was going to give these to Jenny, if you look at the building right here, this building collapsed about 15 years ago. An architect in the lobby and I were talking about this, and he was in that building, and you can see the amount of retaining wall that they had to do there to do that. The—the further line up the cliff like that is where the telephone pole easement is about. It's not exact. I didn't have any—and then you can see the amount of grading here. Is there other ones, Jenny? Now, here's—the back of the building right here that has—it's the Mariners' Point retail. My line's a little crooked there, but you can see where the telephone poles are. And look at—the look at the slope there. It's at least 45 degrees or whatever, and so that's—and there's maybe one more. And then here's that—at—the building corner like that, you can see what—what is—it was happening there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
Good evening. My name is Maryam Parman. I am a resident for 3 Kings Road, and I really oppose this project, not necessarily the dealership, but I'm a homeowner. I live there. I drive Pacific Coast Highway. I drive Dover. I have a child, and I have worked very, very hard to be able to afford and purchase that house. This project is going to affect the homeowners, especially on King's Road. I'm going to be pretty much right above it. And making a decision based on the income that a project is going to bring to the city or how good it's going to be for Mariners' Miles or the Balboa Bay Resort—I'm a member there—but that is not for the benefit of the residents. We're taxpayers. We work hard. We would like to keep the integrity, the value of our home, and also the environment, the traffic. You all know how it is driving on PCH at certain times of the day, and we assume we're only going to add 300. And then what about construction? How long are we going to close one lane? And what is that going to do? So I really, really would strongly recommend that you think of the residents and the people of Newport Beach versus big corporations or businesses. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
Chair Elmore, members of the Planning Commission, my name is Jim Mosher. First of all, early in the staff presentation, we heard that this slope was not recognized as a bluff in our coastal land use plan. There's a very good reason for that, which is this site is not in the coastal zone, oddly, and therefore, it's not even part of the coastal land use plan. So it's not surprising. It's not analyzed or considered there. Second, about the two inches, I share Commissioner Saleem's mystification about why a building could not be adjusted two inches, and instead you have to make findings for a modification permit. I personally don't see how you could make those findings. I—I'm looking here in handout 2E revised floor plan. The offending area seems to be right here at this corner, and it's marked as a no parking area of an enclosed parking garage. It would seem to me surely this building on the E—the wall on the EV side could just be extended there. You could put a little jug in the wall, and the 15 feet would not be encroaching two inches. So why are you having to make an exception to our zoning code for that? It seems easily remedied here. And also, looking at this plan, the—the plans that the public had to review in this are very minimal. I'm not sure what the indications are in the EV lab. There's something here next to this jug in the wall looks very much to me like a lift where you raise vehicles up to work underneath them. I'm not sure what it is, but if any of these are representing lifts that are operated hydraulically, then under our zoning code, this becomes not a limited auto dealership, but a full auto dealership, in which case it needs a conditional use permit. But my main concern is about the bluff. We heard again in the appellant's—and the applicant's presentation that they have big setbacks on the west side where the bluff is not supposed to be disturbed. They told you on the west end by McDonald's, 85 feet back from the property line. I tried to scale the site plan that they provided. Perhaps it's not accurate, but it comes out 70 feet, not 85 feet. It's currently about 90 feet, it appears to me, where there's just a little wall. So the big problem I have is they're really excavating this bluff to very large extent. At that end, it looks like they're pushing back 20 feet horizontally from where the current walls are to expand their parking lot. And where the buildings are, they're pushing back about 10 feet into this. So that's making a big retaining wall about eight feet tall, and behind the building, part of the building about 20 feet tall. Those are very big impacts, and like the appellant, I'm wondering if the environmental impacts of that have been properly analyzed. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other speakers?
Chair Elmore and members of the Planning Commission, good evening. I'm Russ Fluter, the property owner of the project before you tonight. This Genesis automobile dealership will consolidate 11 small parcels into one carefully-planned use. It's a low-intensity project that will provide much-needed improvement to the Mariners' Mile. It will also provide significant tax revenue to our city. In addition to the merits of the project, it also provides a public benefit to the city through the dedication of 12 feet along the PCH. I would like to thank the Planning Commission for their time and careful consideration of this project. I urge you to approve the project. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other speakers? Okay, Christina, the applicant, would you care to come on back up and respond?
Yes, thank you, Chair Elmore. Shawna Schaffner for the applicant, and I might request more than two minutes if that's okay, but I'll try to be as quick as possible.
Three minutes?
That would be great. Thank you. First, related to the public notice, we have reviewed the city's affidavit that the notice was accurate. My notice was postmarked February 24th. The appellant is here and represented, so I don't think there's been any harm by any potential noticing delays. Related to the CEQA exemptions, I would like to say first for traffic, 299 trips on a state highway is not— trips on a state highway is not a significant impact. There are no mitigation measures associated with this project. There are project design features and standard conditions of approval that the city implements for all such projects to ensure that they're compatible with the community. These are not environmentally-related mitigation measures. Related to, let's see, cumulative impacts, this project is exempt from CEQA. We are not required to do a thorough cumulative impacts analysis. The city does maintain a list of cumulative projects. Perhaps the city attorney could speak more to that, but there has been no evidence submitted into the record tonight specifically how this project would impact the environment or on a cumulative basis, how the project would impact the environment. Going back to, I think, Mr. Tran at three-twenty-one Kings Road, I believe that his assessor mailings go to a different address, so he was notified and he's here tonight. So again, we, I don't think we have a constructive notice issue. For Mr. Carlson's concerns related to slope stability, it's clearly a concern. This is an old property. We have had bits of dirt crumbling down the hill. And that is why this project has been carefully designed to improve the factor of safety. And so I think based on the professional plans that have been prepared to date, the additional requirements that will come when building permit applications are submitted for, I think that the city technical staff certainly has their hands on the geotechnical concerns here. This is no different than many other areas in the city. Again, related to Mr. Mosher's comments about a coastal bluff, he's correct. It's not in the city's local coastal program. This is not technically a coastal bluff. But we have tried to minimize the impact in this area, cite the building, design the retaining walls in an appropriate way, both to improve safety, but also to minimize the grading impacts. And then I would say, related to his suggestion that we might jog the wall, jogging a very small section of wall for a large building is incredibly expensive. And I would leave this to the experts. I would hope that we wouldn't be planning for a two-inch jog up at this dais. So I respectfully request that that not be on the table tonight. Again, I'm available to answer any questions and I thank the commission very much for your time.
Thank you. The appellate, any final comments?
Yeah, just, just a few items here based upon what was said in response there. The purpose of notice is not to provide notice to the few that may think about objecting to a project, but to everyone in the zone that they're supposed to receive notice of so that the people who didn't get it three days ago, two days ago, one day, no, day ago, know about this hearing. We don't know who didn't get the notice because they're not here. So to say that, well, the appellate's here and someone else is here, it kind of begs the question, well, who's not here because they didn't get proper notice? And then in terms of this issue of the slope, I think some of the photos that were, that were shown to the commission just show how large this slope is, how much excavation is going to occur, the size and scope of the retaining walls and the impacts to all of those homes up on top of that bluff are substantial. The potential impacts are substantial and therefore further environmental review and analysis is required. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, before I close the public hearing, any staff, any comments for the record?
Just a, just a few comments. So I do just want to assure the, the commission that the noticing was properly prepared and we double-checked. It was all in compliance with our, our code and state law. Regarding the slope stability comments, I just want to also mention that it's not uncommon to develop along this hillside. Several of the homes along the top of the hillside commonly develop down, a lot of shoring, excavation. Properties along the bottom of the slope commonly develop retaining walls into the slope. The Mariners Point Development next door is an example. The plans will be required to be submitted for review through our professional building engineers review and our geotechnical engineer for the review. There'll be professional geotechnical reports and slope stability analysis will be prepared. And so we're confident that there's not going to be any issues related to slope stability. With regards to the comments regarding CEQA, we stand behind the CEQA exemptions that were provided and robust facts were provided within the resolution before you today.
Okay.
Oh, with respect to CEQA, if I could just add that with the categorical exemptions, there is a presumption in favor of them, those were supported with the eleven technical reports. And then really, it's incumbent upon opponents to demonstrate the inadequacy of those reports and why they aren't appropriate. I have not heard any factual evidence in the record that would dictate a different result with respect to applying those categorical exemptions. I would also point out that with respect to other exemptions, I did cite in the resolution, section one-five-one-eight-three, which essentially provides that if there's no general plan amendment and/or zoning code amendment and a prior environmental document has analyzed a project, that no additional CEQA is required. So when you look at the two-thousand-six E I R for the general plan update, this type of development was contemplated in that environmental document. And so I don't think that without, again, additional evidence to support significant impacts, that additional E I R would be required here. And that kind of ties into the cumulative impacts. I heard, you know, discussion about the city not properly analyzing environmental or cumulative impacts. And I would just, again, highlight the fact that there's no general plan amendment required, no zoning code amendment required. So really, there are no cumulative impacts that we would need to be analyzing. Those were already, already tied into the two-thousand-six general plan update. And I would just reiterate with respect to Mr. Murillo's notice, comments on the noticing, section twenty-sixty-two, O two O requires a variety of different notices within ten days or ten days prior. And it includes posting at the site, publishing and mailing those. And we did comply with them within the statutory requirements. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. At this time, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing and bring it back to this commission for discussion and inaction. I'll just remind everybody there that's listening, you know, as a planning commission, it's our job to take and evaluate the technical expertise, staff's recommendation, and make sure that it complies within the code. Well, I understand there's other things that were discussed around revenue and, and the beautification and whatnot. That's, that's not really our jurisdiction or purview. It's, it is what it is. We're, we're the technical body and that's what we're looking at here. So on that note, Commissioner Saleem, Commissioner Langford, Commissioner Lowry, any comments that you want to say? Yeah, Commissioner Lowry.
In reviewing this, I thought the staff did a really good job in terms of, of supporting all the findings in the resolution. I guess, I think one of my concerns was just the, you know, the retaining wall, but I feel confident that once that comes to be and that, that our team here will be for sure that that's, that's done correctly before, before anything is built. So I don't want to take away any time from our, my colleagues here, but I'm prepared to support this resolution now. I will, I'd make a motion unless someone else wants to speak.
Commissioner Saleem?
I guess my only comment would be, I think this is, I think this is a nice cleanup of the area. I like the, the, right away, we're getting on PCH and how that's going to clean things up. I'm still befuddled by the fact that we can't figure out how to get rid of two inches so as to avoid the modification permit, but overall, I think this is a nice project.
Yeah, great, thanks. Commissioner Langford?
I think it's a good-looking project for all the reasons that have already been covered. I'm in support.
Okay. Do we have a, a motion? And/or Commissioner Lowry?
Yeah, I'll move agenda item two, the recommendations. We did the de novo hearing. We find this exempt from CEQA and then adopt resolution PC twenty-twenty-four dash zero-zero-four.
Right. If you could just add the one-five-one-eight-three, which I'm not sure is in this piece right here, but as an additional basis for the CEQA.
I will add, was it one-one?
One-five-one-eight-three.
There we go. I'll add it.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion, second. Call for a vote.
The motion carries unanimously.
All right. Congrats to the applicant. Moving on. New business items, item number three, the general plan annual progress report, P A two dash, or P A two zero-zero-seven dash one-nine-five, site location citywide. I believe, Jaime, you have a presentation?
I do, thank you Chair Elmore.
Yep.
I'll be presenting this on behalf of Melinda Wayland, Assistant Planner. I do want to credit her, this, she put a lot of hard work into preparing this annual progress report. This annual progress report is required under state law. And so there's really two components. One is an overview of our general plan implementation. And then the second component.
One second, excuse me, folks in the back. Excuse me, folks in the back, would you mind? Um, yes, Mr. Hill, yes, you. Thank you.
Thank you. And then the second part is a more thorough overview of our housing element implementation. So this document was prepared in compliance with the Office of Planning and Research Guidelines as well as the requirements from the State Department of Housing and Community Development. Their support will also be presented to the city council at the March twenty-sixth meeting. And under state law, we must submit the report to the state by April first. In terms of the general plan progress report, I think it's important to note that the last comprehensive update of our general plan was done back in two thousand and six. And so throughout the years of, we've completed a number of the implementation items. A lot of those items are ongoing. And so this report goes through them comprehensively. But there are some elements that are kind of out of date and need a refresh. And therefore, the city council has initiated a comprehensive update back in two thousand and nineteen. This update is ongoing and it's going to follow the latest guidelines from the state. Some additional topics that are going to be included are going to be environmental justice, which is required by state law, as well as resiliency and climate change. So just in terms of status, as I mentioned, we initiated the update in two thousand and nineteen. In two thousand and twenty-two, some significant accomplishments were that the city council adopted the housing element update, which was deemed compliant with state law. The city council also updated the circulation element with refreshed policies, including V M T and complete streets. However, throughout two thousand and twenty-three, there's been a lot of effort with regards to the general plan update. We've convened the general plan update steering committee and the advisory committee. Each of those committees met a total of nine times. And there's been several subcommittee meetings as well. And then in July of two thousand and twenty-three, the city was able to bring D U Dec under contract as our consultant, and that's really helped jumpstart the, the efforts. Just a quick overview of the schedule and deliverables. There's really like four components of the general plan update. We're currently in that first phase, which is that background analysis phase. A number of technical reports are currently under preparation and being reviewed by the general plan advisory committee and subcommittees. So that's ongoing through spring of this year. The next phase will be actually working on the general plan, language itself, the policy implementation, the vision statement. And the next phase would be the actual CEQA preparation. And then finally, hearings is anticipated in summer of two thousand and twenty-five. But throughout the process, there's going to be opportunities for engagement by the citizens. And this slide here just shows how members of the public can participate. Members can attend the various G P A C and steering committee meetings as well as the subcommittee meetings. All these meetings are advertised on the city's website and the city calendar. That website is, provides information on how to stay engaged, background on the general plan, and then various resources and documents that we're preparing. And the next upcoming public outreach event will be the Mayor's A-Grace. Now switching gears to just housing activity and the housing element component, I just want to highlight a couple of significant accomplishments. So in two thousand and twenty-three, the city's issued permits for a total of forty-three A D U's. Forty-two of those, the city will get credit for in the different affordable income categories. And we've also finalized a total of fifty-six A D U's with fifty-five of those counting in the various affordable housing income categories. In terms of arena progress, this is an eight-year planning cycle. So we're in the third planning, or the third year of the planning cycle. This year, we've permitted a total of forty-three units. Again, these are all accessory dwelling units. But there, we have made significant progress in terms of other projects beyond A D U's. So in two thousand and twenty-three, we've had three significant projects. We have had the residences at thirteen-hundred Bristol, which included twenty-four affordable units for rent. The residences at fourteen-hundred Bristol, which include twenty-three affordable units for rent. And the residences at fourteen-on-one Quail, and this is six affordable units for sale. And these two, these last two projects will be going to city council soon for approval. A lot of our efforts this past year focused on implementing policy actions one A through one G. And this is the rezoning of the sites we identified in the housing element update. So we have three years from the deadline for the housing element to complete the rezoning. And so we've shared this effort with this planning commission and city council through various study sessions. This effort includes updates to the city's land use element and coastal land use element policies, the creation of zoning overlays, and the creation of objective design standards. These documents are, will be in front of the planning commission on April eighteenth is the anticipated schedule. And then the idea is for city council approval in July or August of this year. And then if approved, the land use element component will be subject to a vote of the electorate in November of two thousand and twenty-four. Some other highlights, really focused on A D U production, as you saw in the previous slides. The city has been permitted a number of A D U's. In two thousand and twenty-three, we had seventy-two A D U's submitted for review and a total of seventy-one permitted and/or completed. The city's A D U incentives, there's a number of programs in the housing element that require the city to try to promote A D U development. And so we created a, a really nice website that's a great resource for property owners and architects seeking to build A D U's and to foster interest into the development. We've also prepared standard plans that homeowners can use to reduce the cost for plan preparation, and they're essentially pre-reviewed for architectural and structural review. Then lastly, just want to highlight some of the efforts the city had with regards to assisting the unhoused population in two thousand and twenty-three. And so we had a total of three-hundred-and-thirty-four transports to various services. Over three-thousand-six-hundred individuals were contacted and provided information. And then a hundred-and-seventy-five individuals were provided resources. And sixteen individuals were provided permanently, permanent housing through various resources. And that concludes the report. Endable for any questions?
Right, thank you. A lot of work, well done. Commissioner, any questions? No, it's okay. Anybody from the audience, I'll open up the public hearing. Anybody from the audience wish to comment on this item? Mr. Mosher?
Chair Elmore, members of the commission, my name is Jim Mosher. I wanted to thank Assistant Planner Wayland for preparing these reports as she does every year. I have a special interest in them because I'm actually a member of the general plan advisory committee. The reason being, it's really hard for the city to find thirty volunteers, so they have to kind of scrape the bottom of the barrel. I am on that committee. I, I would note, as you probably undoubtedly saw when you reviewed this with great care, that there are some summary tables in here that, that are populated by some spreadsheets that have to be submitted to the state. And on the city's website at, the city website slash A P R, the current set doesn't actually seem to have been posted yet. So I assume they were supposed to be posted for public review and they will be before it goes to the council. The summary arena table that's in here is a little misleading and I'm now a little confused about it. It's showing our actual housing production in the first three years of the cycle. And it's showing for last year, forty-three units, many of which were affordable, matter of fact, almost all of them. But the reason being that they're all A D U's, no other housing being produced apparently during the year. But I'm confused now whether the number is correctly forty-three or seventy-one, as we saw on the slide up there. There's some other tables that are in here that are showing not just what we actually accomplished, but the pending applications that many of which you have approved here. And I think if you look carefully at those, you will see, this one would indicate it's going to take about a hundred years to meet our four-thousand-eight-hundred unit goal. But there are more things that you have approved coming that way, but those do not have a large affordable component. in it. I think you'll find it's less than 10%. So it's going to be very hard to make our goal with that. And also of the projects that have been approved, I noticed one of them, 150 Newport Center, which is at the former car wash site over here, which I believe you approved. I believe that's an entirely luxury product, so I'm not quite sure why it's in the list here of outstanding projects with an affordable component. And then another thing I thought was missing here, the accomplishments in implementing the housing element update. One of, I thought one of the major accomplishments during the year, which I didn't actually myself endorse, was getting the noise contours moved and changing the noise contour standards so that there would be more development allowed near the airport. And I thought that happened last year. Could have missed it. I didn't see it anywhere in the report. Thank you.
Thank you. And Mr. Mosher, thank you for your participation and wit. We appreciate it. I'll go ahead and close the public hearing and bring this back to the commission for a motion. This would be a motion to find it exempt from CEQA and pass on, push it up to the City Council. So we have a motion and a second. Do we have a, Commissioner Langford?
I'll make that motion.
Great, thank you. We have a second?
I'll second it.
All right. We have a motion, a second. Call for a vote.
The motion carries unanimously.
Great. Moving on. Staff and Commissioner items. Item number four, motion for reconsideration. Are there any motions for reconsideration? Okay, seeing none. Item number five, report by the community development director or requests for matters which a planning commissioner would like to place on a future agenda item.
Yes.
Jaime, please.
Jaime Murillo, acting deputy director. Just a few items to note. So we don't have any items scheduled for the March 21st Planning Commission agenda, so that agenda will be canceled. For April 4th, we did have two items tentatively scheduled. One was a variance for Tracy Residence, and the second item was a call for review by Commissioner Langford regarding the Starbucks at 2523 East Bluff Drive. This was a decision of the zoning administrator to approve a minor use permit that allowed late hours. I did just want to inform the commission that Starbucks withdrew their application this morning. And with that, the use is classified as a takeout service fast casual, which is permitted by right within that zoning district, provided they don't maintain late hours. So with that, with the closing hour of 11:00 PM, there would be an allowed use, and so that item would be removed from the agenda. And so we'll look to see if we need to reschedule the variance for a different item or a different agenda date. And that, that's all I have.
Great, thank you. Anyone from the audience wish to comment on these items? Mr. Mosher, come on up.
I just wanted to say thank you that the Planning Commission is actually paying attention to what happens at the zoning administrator meetings. As you may or may not know, there's a standing item on the council agenda. So next Tuesday, they will be hearing a report on what you did at this meeting so that the council members have an opportunity to call up for review the things that happened at these meetings. I'm not quite sure how you are informed of what happens at the zoning administrator meetings, but you do have the ability to oversee those and call up things that you might think were of more importance and should be at this level. So I appreciate that somebody actually did that. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Moving on. Item number six, request for excused absences. Are there any requests for excused absences? Seeing none, I will say that we are adjourned. Have a good evening, everybody.